This is a call to order for a regular commission meeting. It is about seven o'clock by my, on the thirteenth of September two thousand twenty-one. Please silence all your phones and rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think somehow you guys can see the flag is.
The city clerk to the roll call please.
Vice Mayor Frazlowski.
Here.
Commissioner Pletcher.
Here.
Commissioner Grills.
Here.
Commissioner Grill.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, first thing on the agenda is. Well, Marcus said, I think he set a record for being sworn in more times in a nine-month period than a person.
Amber swears this is the last time though.
Oh.
Last time this year.
This year, yeah, there you go. Okay, who's got, are you gonna do it, Amber?
Yes.
Okay.
Monica's getting good at it. It's like I know how to hold it right.
Oh, there, I wondered where your wife was.
Sitting in the back.
Oh, okay.
Are you ready again? Right hand, yes, okay. I'm Mark Grill.
Hi, Mark Grill.
A citizen of the state of Florida.
A citizen of the state of Florida.
And of the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
And a full-time resident of the district from which I was elected.
And a full-time resident of the district from which I was elected.
And being an officer of the city of Saint Pete Beach, Florida.
And being an officer of the city of Saint Pete Beach, Florida.
And a recipient of public funds as such officer.
And a recipient of public funds as such officer.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the constitution and laws of the United States.
And the constitution and laws of the state of Florida.
And the constitution and laws of the state of Florida.
I further swear that I will.
I further swear that I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Observe the provisions of the charter.
Observe the provisions of the charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the city of Saint Pete Beach, Florida.
Of the city of Saint Pete Beach, Florida.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of city commissioner.
Of the office of city commissioner.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Yes, welcome.
One more time. It gets more fun each time, right?
I said you should have it memorized.
Yeah, I was gonna say by now.
Sounds like you did. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mark.
Thank you.
Want to make any comments or do we just dive in?
Well, just to say thank you, Amber, for doing that again and I look forward to continuing working with the commission and moving forward representing the residents of District Two and of the city and continuing to make Saint Pete Beach a number-one beach in the, in the country and a great place to live and a great place for people to visit. So, thank you.
Yeah.
Well said, well said. Okay, um, let's see, changes the agenda, anyone?
We're adding a presentation by Jake Holhouse concerning FEMA two point zero.
FEMA two, where do we want to put that?
Right now. I'm sorry, guys, I guess that is changes, it really was.
It is changes, but yeah.
We just didn't get confirmation that Jake was gonna be able to attend.
Okay.
This is what we talked about before.
He is here, I see him.
If you wanna come on up, Jake, and, uh, this is something that's really important that I thought, rather than me trying to.
Our residents, business owners and property owners in Saint Pete Beach. So with that being said, I am Jake Holhouse, so I own an insurance agency here called HH Insurance, but I've also been nominated by your city commission to represent policyholders as the FEMA flood advocate. So basically walking policyholders in Saint Pete Beach through technical reading questions as to what's going on with their flood insurance policy. And basically, what we're gonna walk through is, is what's happening with the NFIP, what is the NFIP, the private flood marketplace, and then some rate examples. All of the information presented is public information, so there will be a couple, you know, pictures of homes presented. There's nothing that's materially non-public information, it is all public record information derived from the Pinellas County Property Appraisers Office. So with that being said, some of you might remember that probably about two, three years ago, we did a presentation on flood insurance map changes. And it was very positive and we were saying, hey, Saint Pete Beach, we're looking really good. So we're gonna see base flood elevation drop for probably about ninety percent of homes by two to four feet. We're also gonna see a lot of flood zone changes going from a VE velocity flood zone to an AE flood zone. Well, at the same time, that happened, you know, Pinellas County came out with that about July twenty-six, twenty-eighteen. We got those preliminary maps and that's what we presented to, to the city commission. And on August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one, that map went into effect. So that meant basically on August twenty-fourth, a policyholder could purchase a policy based on this new flood insurance rate map. Well, simultaneously to that, FEMA announced this thing called Risk Rating Two Point O. And they had announced it, you know, probably about three years ago, they said it's coming, March twenty-twenty-one. They say, hey, it's coming, it's really not gonna be a big deal and we're gonna make this effective October first, twenty-twenty-one. And so then what they did is they waited until August thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one to give the rates for this new program and that's essentially what we're working under. So we only had this like really sweet flood map for Saint Pete Beach for about six days because that flood map happened at really a local or a state level and this FEMA change is a national change. So what's happening is on October first, twenty-twenty-one, any new flood insurance policy has to issue onto these new rates. On April first, twenty-twenty-two, any renewal flood policy has to issue onto these new rates. Now, what's gonna happen is if your rate is going up, which for most residents, in fact, I'd probably be going to say a hundred percent of residents in Saint Pete Beach are going to see a rate increase on that. There is a statutory cap within the policy that says your policy cannot go up by more than eighteen percent per year. But on it, basically all renewals after April first, twenty-twenty-two, you will start to see the final risk rate published on the declaration page. So it might say a rate of, let's call it five thousand dollars, but a policyholder only pays six hundred and fifty dollars and basically they go up eighteen percent per year compounded over that time period until they get to that rate. So what is the NFIP? So basically NFIP, you'll hear a lot, you'll hear the word FEMA a lot, and basically NFIP stands for National Flood Insurance Program. Prior to October first, twenty-twenty-one, if we kinda look at the Tampa Bay region from a new purchase standpoint, about sixty percent of homes were being issued into the NFIP, about forty percent into the private flood insurance market. So basically they kinda compete with each other, the NFIP kinda like set the bar of rate and the private market would say, hey, we really like this risk, we're gonna write it for, for a lower rate. And we would see that happen about forty percent of the time. I would say after October first, based on the new rates that we're seeing, probably ninety percent of flood policies are going to end up shifting over to the private marketplace. Now, that's gonna happen over about a five-year time period because again, you've got these eighteen percent caps in the policy and so it just basically will compound over time in terms of rate. So one of the popular questions that we get is, why are we talking about this so much? You know, you go back ten years ago, people didn't really talk about flood insurance nearly as much as they do today. You didn't hear about that pain point in terms of flood rates. And this is basically a chart going up to twenty-twelve and it shows premium rates in the National Flood Insurance Program. And you'll see that basically premium rates kinda gradually just go up over time. But then, as we look at claims, you'll see from the advent of the program in the nineteen-seventies through about two thousand and three, the program always had more premium in there than they had claims and so it was a really good program. But then you have the two thousand and four Florida hurricane season where you have four major storms hit. Then you have the two thousand and five hurricane season and that was really capped with Hurricane Katrina and that fundamentally changes the flood insurance program. But you also see two thousand and eight is a bad year, two thousand and eleven is a bad year, and then two thousand and twelve is a really bad year with Superstorm Sandy. So what happened is at the, you know, midpoint of twenty-twelve, you have a flood insurance program that's about twenty-four billion dollars in debt and so there's a huge deficit sitting there and Congress says, well, we have to do something to balance this program out. So what Congress does is they enact this thing called Bigger Waters. Bigger Waters, a lot of us remember that we saw it in the newspaper and that's when flood insurance rates went from two thousand to ten thousand dollars overnight. And that really just drove up flood premiums across pretty much a lot of Saint Pete Beach policyholders that were slab-on-grade homes. You saw those rates go up drastically in, in, in a pretty short time period. And one of the other things that it did though is it had this line in there called Establishing a Technical Mapping Advisory Council to deal with map modernization issues. And so out of that FEMA basically forms this thing called Risk Rating Two Point O and it fundamentally changes how FEMA calculates flood insurance rates for the first time since nineteen-seventy-five. So after Bigger Waters, we have this Homeowners Flood Insurance Affordability Act of twenty-fourteen. And that happens in March twenty-fourteen and so what that did is that basically restored rates that we've been used to. And this is between Bigger Waters and this Homeowners Flood Insurance Affordability Act of twenty-fourteen, that is what flood insurance is issued on today by FEMA. And so for the majority of Saint Pete Beach policyholders in FEMA, they are issued to this Bigger Waters slash HFIAA Act in terms of legislation. And so separate from what we're talking about with Risk Rating Two Point O and separate from what we are talking about with flood map updates, you also have that the program has to get renewed by Congress. Well, Bigger Waters renewed the program for five years and that was in twenty-twelve. So that means that ended in twenty-seventeen. So since twenty-seventeen, the flood insurance program has been running on ninety to one hundred and eighty-day renewal periods. That is also set to expire on September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. We do not see any indication that it will not be renewed, but that is just something to point out there is you're probably going to see the program get renewed for another hundred and eighty days and our hope optimistically is that there's enough movement in terms of people upset on some of these Risk Rating Two Point O changes that they start to see that maybe we'll get a long-term bill that restores grandfathering within the policies so that people can maintain their flood rates if they already own their property. So what we would ideally love to see would be a five-to-seven-year program. You know, it's, it's hard for people to come in and have uncertainty and when you have ninety and hundred and eighty-day extensions and then you have things like Risk Rating Two Point O, it provides uncertainty to policyholders. The other is grandfathering and grandfathering, in my opinion, is probably one of the most important things that the flood insurance program offers. And the, the real key to grandfathering is built-in compliance. And what built-in compliance means is if you're a policyholder in Saint Pete Beach and you built your house and let's just call it nineteen ninety-five, that means you built it to the Pinellas County nineteen eighty-three flood map and if it said that your house has to be ten feet and you built your house to ten feet, you're a FEMA compliant home. And then on this new flood program that came in that happened August twenty-fourth, they now say your house, house has to be twelve feet. What it did is it grandfathered you into that ten-foot rating elevation. So it gave rate preservation to somebody that built their house instead of somebody builds a property, now the federal government comes in five years later and says, hey, you built it incorrectly, but, but we didn't tell you what correct was at the time and grandfathering basically allowed somebody to do that. Part of the Risk Rating Two Point O program is that grandfathering is removed. So that's where, it's not gonna be removed overnight for, for current policyholders, but what you're gonna see happen is eighteen percent rate increases year over year over year until it gets to this new rate program that FEMA has established. So just as an example of missing grandfathering, this is a house, they're paying three thousand eighty-seven dollars for flood insurance without grandfathering, you put grandfathering in there, it goes down to one thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars. And that's that, you know, house that we said build to ten feet, they built it to ten feet with grandfathering, they've preserved that twelve-hundred-dollar rate structure. So what is Flood Risk Two Point O? Flood Risk Two Point O again is the first fundamental change to FEMA since nineteen-seventy-five. So from nineteen-seventy-five to September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, flood insurance has been rated the same. October first, twenty-twenty-one, that, that totally changes. And what basically FEMA's goal of it was, was to basically have a, a more realistic flood rate for homes. So the way that Risk Rating One Point O works is apples-to-apples being the same. If you have a house that's in Saint Pete Beach and it's on the Gulf and Passag grill and it's elevated to a plus-two elevation and you take that same house that's in, in an AE flood zone, take it to Orlando at a plus-two elevation, they pay the exact same rate. So it's based on zone plus base flood elevation comes up with a rate. So it does make some sense that FEMA would say, hey, we wanna charge more for coastal homes. But then it comes down to, well, how much more? And so what FEMA did is they basically came back and they said, alright, we're gonna charge more for being close to floodwater. Well, unfortunately, we're in Saint Pete Beach, so we are surrounded by floodwater. Between the Gulf and the intracoastal, that, that is all considered floodwater by FEMA. The second thing, and this is the, the real killer to this, this rating change, is they're going to charge based on the cost to rebuild a home. So most policyholders know that in a flood insurance policy, you are capped on your dwelling building coverage to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if your house costs two hundred and fifty thousand, you buy two fifty. If your house is five hundred thousand, you still buy two hundred and fifty thousand of flood coverage. And if your house is two million, you still buy two hundred and fifty thousand in flood coverage within the FEMA flood program. What FEMA is doing is they're now changing that to say, alright, based on the square footage of the home, we are going to pick our rate. And so the larger your home is, the bigger rate that you're gonna have to pay. With that being said, the bigger your enclosure is, so think like the garage below the house, the bigger that is, that also calculates into a cost to rebuild and so now you have to pay a higher flood insurance rate. And that, that really stinks and so what we'll do is kinda, sorry, and why did we get here? So this is a memo that FEMA put out, you can see it's dated March twenty-twenty-one. And what they did is they basically said, alright, twenty percent of policyholders are gonna see a rate decrease. Well, none of us really expected that Saint Pete Beach would see rate decreases, but they said that basically sixty-eight percent are going to see less than a hundred and twenty dollars per year of an increase, eight percent between one twenty and two hundred and forty dollars per year, and four percent greater than that. So that's where a lot of people sat there and said like, hey, this is awesome, now we have a lot of rate security and we know what's coming. Well, the challenge is when you take eighteen percent on a six hundred dollar flood policy, it fits you within those categories. And, and the key word that FEMA used here is they said ninety-six percent of current policyholders. Well, the problem with that is with that eighteen percent cap, that's a true statement. The challenge that we're seeing is you're seeing that six hundred dollar flood policy go to six thousand dollars over time. So if you're the homeowner and you're coming in to purchase this property and you say, hey, yeah, it's great that your flood policy is six hundred dollars right now, but I know that in ten years it's gonna be five thousand dollars, that does deter a lot of confidence in terms of wanting to make that purchase. And I think, you know, for a lot of the waterfront homes, people will probably still buy them and be willing to pay for the flood premium. The one that, you know, scares me from a rate standpoint are those non-waterfront homes. Why does somebody wanna pay so much more in flood insurance to be in a non-waterfront house on Saint Pete Beach when they can go to Kenwood and be not in a flood zone? And if they know that their flood insurance cost long-term is going from, you know, two thousand to five thousand, that's a pretty big shift for most working-class households. But that's kinda the history as to why did we get here and why did nobody talk about this is because, you know, FEMA releases the actual rates August thirtieth. So we have about a six-month time period where we're all expecting, this is really not a big deal except for four percent of Floridians and unfortunately, we're seeing the opposite. So where is flood insurance purchased? Just kinda the, the rundown is basically, you know, FEMA writes about ninety percent of it in terms of current policyholders in Florida and then you have the private flood marketplace that makes up the rest of it. So what we're gonna do is just walk through some rate examples. We're gonna kinda just go around Tampa Bay and then also do it in a real, actual rate example for each of your districts. So this is just kinda your average house in, in Saint Petersburg in the kinda Tyrone Mall type area. And what you see, three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, their flood insurance rate today is three thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars if we look at a maximum limit FEMA flood policy. There's ways you can make your policy cheaper with different contents, coverage and things like that, but just from an apples-to-apples standpoint, we, we went maximum limits on there. So on the new program, basically they see a big rate reduction. So this is not a high-value home and it's also not close to water. So their source of flooding is more than about twenty-five hundred feet, so they see a rate reduction. In FEMA, their rate goes thirty-six hundred down to seventeen fifty-five, private market will write it for four forty-six. However, as we look at what a lot of us are used to seeing on Vina Del Mar and we see a nice house valued around a million five per the FEMA calculator, right now, that flood insurance rate is six hundred and thirty-six dollars. In the new flood insurance program, that rate goes to eleven thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars for a Saint Pete Beach policyholder. In the private market, it goes to one thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars. But that's still a huge swing in terms of rate, going from six thirty-six is your expectation dating back to the nineteen-seventies up to nineteen hundred in terms of current rates that are being seen out there. As we continue to look, this is just a house in Clearwater in the Feather Sound area. Four hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, their rate goes from sixteen fifty-eight to thirty-four fifty. Private flood's about forty-four hundred, so again, you're seeing huge rate jumps for the more coastal-type areas of Pinellas County, but also the ones that have the higher dwelling coverages. This is an Apollo Beach example, so this is a waterfront home in Apollo Beach. It has a value around nine hundred and ninety-five thousand. Today's rate is eight hundred and twenty-four dollars, the new rate is ten thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And private flood on there is twenty-five oh eight. So you're seeing that trend that it's distance to coast plus, plus the higher values are, are what really get hit on here. Just a house in Tampa, this is the Ballast Point area, again, close to water, but just a simple little three hundred thousand dollar house. What you see in that three hundred thousand dollar house is their FEMA rate goes from thirty-six hundred to fifty-seven thirty-seven. Now, the private flood market will write it for thirty-five eighty-eight, but again, if we're just looking at FEMA, that's a huge jump based on this new rating factor of distance to tidal water. So here's a District One example, and so this is just a house that we found listed on Zillow and right now it has a rate at five hundred and fifty-two dollars. And again, this is your, your standard rebuild cost, five hundred and fifty thousand dollar townhouse and you see that new FEMA rate at eight thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. The private flood rate would do it for nineteen fifty, but even at nineteen fifty, that's a huge jump. And, and the, the one thing that we also don't know is, well, once these new FEMA rates come out, how much does the private flood rate start to push their rates up as well? Because they see that they're leaving money on the table with this. As we look at a commercial example, so this is our District Two example. Now, commercial flood really sees a benefit from this. So commercial, FEMA has always punished commercial, so what is in commercial, you can buy up to five hundred thousand in coverage. So this rate is at four hundred thousand in coverage. And right now in the NFIP program, NFIP would charge twenty-five thousand dollars for that flood program. So you see that that doesn't really make a lot of sense from a rate standpoint. On the new rates, it's at nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars, private market's at sixty-seven ninety-one. So for that guy, they actually get a benefit, however, it's, it's probably already written in the private flood program. As we look at a District Three Bel Vista type example, just your standard, you know, house in Bel Vista, about three thousand square feet, what you're seeing is right now the rate is about thirty-six sixty-three. That rate goes to eleven thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars in this new FEMA rating program. The private flood program on that would be forty-four seventy. As we look at a District Four example, this is just a house in Passag grill, what we see is right now their rate is four hundred and forty-five dollars, their rate goes to eleven thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Now, again, you kinda say, well, how does that make a lot of sense, right? So you have this house that's elevated, it's at a plus-six to base flood elevation, there's nothing finished on, on the ground floor and now that house pays the same rate as this house that's a slab-on-grade, seven feet below what FEMA says you should build. And the reason is, is because of this cost-to-rebuild rate factor that goes in there and it doesn't necessarily correlate to flood risk at all. However, it does correlate to how much they're going to start paying for flood insurance coverage. And so with that being said, that, that is our unfortunate update in, in terms of what's happening with flood insurance. But I would say that it is something to, to be aware of as you're talking to, to your districts, but also just from a planning standpoint because unfortunately, you know, what we've been seeing and, and you know, when we think about the Bigger Waters Act, that just went after slab-on-grade homes, right? So that was just, if you're a slab-on-grade home, you're gonna see an increase. The downside to this one is pretty much every policyholder in Saint Pete Beach is affected and every policyholder starts to see a rate increase on there. The other side is, you know, we think about the, the condo master policies. Well, it's rated on total rebuild cost. And so as those total rebuild costs get high on the higher-value condo buildings, even though that policy is only giving two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of coverage per unit, we're seeing that rate swing up drastically over time. And so again, it will only happen at eighteen percent per year, but we are seeing that, you know, you can't, you know, just, just as an example, if somebody's paying twelve hundred dollars a year right now in flood coverage, eighteen percent per year in ten years is fifty-six hundred. And so when somebody starts to know that that's their flood rate in ten years, that, that starts to become our fear in terms of what that means.
The, the coverages that you listed on here are all quarter of a million. And that, even if the house is worth two million dollars, you're still only getting covered for a quarter of a million and the rates are that much higher.
That's correct because it's rating on total cost of, of reconstruction.
Let me ask you. If they're not covering it, I don't understand how they can do that.
And, and that's where, you know, we, we wanna bring light to it in terms of saying to, to the commission that, hey, we need to be rallying with these other coastal cities because this, you know, becomes a major problem, problem really fast. The thing is, is it's, it's not just a Saint Pete Beach problem, it's not just a Pinellas County barrier island. This is a federal program problem and, and so I think that it's gonna be something where we don't know what that fallout looks like for a lot of heavily coastal communities. You know, I'd say Pinellas is the second most affected county in Florida. The most affected would be Lee County purely because you think about all the canals that you have in like areas like Cape Coral and then you also have the Calisachi River that runs through there and all of those are distance-to-flood sources. But within Pinellas County, we are one of the most affected cities because one, well, until these new flood maps, one hundred percent. Now, I'd say ninety-nine percent of our property owners in Saint Pete Beach are in a mandatory purchase flood zone. So if they have a mortgage, they're required by law to carry flood insurance coverage.
So, I'm sorry, you?
Well, I, I thought that we were, I mean, we were told that if we built all of our new homes up out of the flood plain, first living level way up here, there's nothing insurable, stories down, we're not really getting a benefit from that anymore, is that correct?
Essentially correct because, you know, now, one of the things that you do see is when people do build new, typically they're building bigger, right? And so a lot of times that total insured cost is going up and so it wipes out the factor. So you think about that Bel Vista house that we used as an example, it's like a six hundred thousand dollar house, right? It's gonna pay the same rate as a two million dollar house. Now, if they built back a six hundred thousand dollar house there, they would still see a rate factor come down. But where we're used to that rate factor at like, let's call it five, six hundred dollars per year, that rate factor is now like five and six thousand dollars per year. Or we can go private flood on there for, let's call it two to three thousand dollars, but that's still, five hundred to two thousand is still a large increase.
Well, I think more than anything, and I'm sorry, is that it's important, like, we're making decisions on the commission that are increasing our QD rating discount, or, you know, we're encouraging everybody with sea level rising, climate change, you know, build that FEMA compliant home. Mike Twitty's working at, you know, doing what he's doing to make it more affordable for people to do that. And I think that with this situation, considering they're even taking total dwelling value into the equation. If they took total dwelling value out, you know, I mean, that's, I think, it's only a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar policy, so it should be a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar, they should just remove the dwelling coverage. And, and, you know, I'm trying to figure out what our call to action is, Jake, and what we can do because private market sounds great on all those slides, what the private market options are, but you're right, it's still variable, subjective to whatever NFIP program. But it's also, there's only so many programs out there, we're not guaranteed a private market ever and some of our homes wouldn't even qualify for a private market because they're. for a private market, because they're too, they still care about elevation certificates, and they care about recurrent flood losses. So that's why, you know, excellent presentation, thank you so much. Tell us what our call to action is, what can we do in order to, you know, do we address the structural value, the dwelling value portion of this, or the grandfathering portion of this, or what exactly should be our targets for getting this fixed?
Yeah, so I think probably the call to action would be rallying with the other, you know, local municipalities in terms of like, hey, guys, we all have a really big problem here that we need to be talking about. And the second would be, you know, I think it's, you see what just happened in Louisiana two weeks ago. Flooding does happen more so than it ever has, purely because we're building more on the coast than we ever have, right? People want to be in coastal communities, which is why Florida is seeing so many new residents come in. And so that, at the same time, you know, means that there's more flood losses that are just going to occur, purely because there's more structure there. So, yeah. Go ahead.
Oh, sorry, I thought you...
But I think, you know, in terms of like, the easy win on there would be, if you just removed that factor of cost to build new, at least it makes sense to build new again and do those elevated homes. And, you know, if we look at it from a private market standpoint, you know, there's approximately 15 private flood markets in the marketplace. Zero of them use total insured value for a rating factor. There's one that does, and it's NFIP. And NFIP's really one that's supposed to be helping people, right? That's why they created that program, and unfortunately, we've gotten away from what that is, to punish the higher-value coastal communities from a rate standpoint.
All right. So thanks, thanks. Thanks for the update, it's a very good synopsis and a good update and education for those watching, or those such as myself, Matt, is familiar. But what it's, it seems counterintuitive to a resiliency view, because what, I mean, you know the insurance market better than I, in my experience, lots of people will give you a quote, but they really don't want to write the policy. But if you want to pay, we'll give you the policy, which tells you they really don't want to write the policies. They don't want to address that segment of the market, but they don't want to say that. And some of those numbers, it seems NFIP wants to just get out of the business and push it out to the private market, which was, I think, the discussions that happened, if I remember all the, what was in the news when this all came up and the push, it's really, let's get the federal government out of this business. But it also, I think, the bigger problem, it's going to run counterintuitive to resiliency, because it would become an affordability factor, and people say, I'm going to take the risk. And then, God forbid, we should ever have a problem, you'll have, not just our community, you'll have large portions of communities that won't have any coverage, and everything will look like Mexico Beach for years.
I agree with you, and you know...
And that's the problem I think we need to address, and whether it's through the Big C, I mean, it seems like we need to get our congressmen and our state senators involved. I mean, at a local level, I don't think there's anyone who's going to say, oh, this is terrible, but don't spend any more time on this, right? So how do we get this to the right? You know, people with influence at the state level, our lobbyists, with our, you know, our state senators, or not our state senators, our federal senators, et cetera.
100% agree with you, and I think the concern that I have on it is, you know, so two things. One, if you have homes that have had a claim, the private market really doesn't want to write them, right? And so the exception to that is if they're elevated homes, and it's like that fluke of a loss, like a Hurricane Michael-type event, they can get coverage. But the slab-on-grade homes that have had claims, they really struggle to get private flood placement. And at those, so that segment of homeowner, it is slim within St. Pete Beach, but you think about something like an ETA that happened last year, there were a lot of claims that happened, and so those, those are homeowners that are really affected by this. The second segment is private flood capacity, right? And so right now, there is enough capacity, because the NFIP is still writing the majority of the risk. The fear that you have is, all right, you have a ZIP code like 33706, where effectively 100% of the homes are in a flood zone. And the reason that the private flood markets don't like to write, you know, huge segments of ZIP codes is because if one house floods, typically, they all flood. You know, it's kind of that methodology as to, if you write 10 homes on a street, there's a chance that all 10 take a flood loss. In fire insurance, if one house catches on fire, typically, the rest do not catch on fire. And even in hurricane wind insurance, you know, one guy might lose their roof, but maybe three or four do, but not, typically not all 10, unless it truly is that cat-five type event. And so I think that's the concern that we run into, is the private flood market's going to work really well right now. We're, you know, as an insurance agent, we're all about it, in terms of, it's a better solution than paying $11,000 and $12,000 for a policy. But at the same time, from a city planning standpoint, how long does the private market want to write that? And that's a question that nobody really knows.
Well, I remember in 2012, you and I were sitting down at so many flood insurance with David Jolly at that time, trying to bring in private market parties. Now, we have how many private market carriers?
It's about 15 or so in the market.
And right now, are you maxed out on, or do you find that private market is fairly maxed out in Pinellas County or in 33706?
At this point, there's still a lot of capacity, but at the same time, like, you don't know how long that goes for. And so at this point, there's not a capacity shortage, but also it hasn't hit October 1st yet, right? And so where the concern becomes is, you hit October 1st, and you start to see that, what happens?
And what happens to the person who didn't pay their flood insurance last year and now wants to get, you know, get flood insurance, and so they don't have a policy to possibly assume, or whatever?
Yeah, that's also a really big challenge with the timing that FEMA did. So, again, FEMA has had these rates since March. They just didn't release the rates to anybody until August 30th. The problem with a FEMA flood policy is that it has a 30-day wait on it. So you say August 30th, 30-day wait, guess what? You have one day to make that purchase from the time you found out about this. And, you know, we as an insurance agent found out about it, but the general public did not. So if the general public finds out about it from this meeting, and they say, man, I dropped my flood policy, I want to go get it again, because now I'm scared of rate increases, that general person has to come in at the new flood insurance rate, whatever that rate that FEMA is delivering back. And so that's, that's a very unfortunate way in terms of how FEMA handled this release of rates.
I think it's also got to impact, clearly, the Commissioner Pletcher and Commissioner Grousse from a real estate standpoint, because there's a segment of the market that's forced, because they have mortgages, by their financial institutions, they won't have a choice. And then they're going to get stuck. So if you're going to go with some of your examples, what happens to those people? Right? And then now, then it really hits the market, and the resale value as well as the people... Florida seems to have done a number of things when it comes to real estate taxes, so people can stay in their house and don't get taxed out. Now you've got this part that says, wait a minute, I don't think I can afford to stay in my house anymore. Which, again, runs counterintuitive to the largest, the larger picture of how do we make sure people can stay in their houses, build resilient communities, and have the capacity, God forbid, that we ever have to recover from a catastrophic event.
100% agree.
Doesn't fit.
And I think one of the challenges is, now this affects every house. You know, if it was just the slab-on-grade homes, hey, that at some point becomes a decision that you're electing to stay at that slab-on-grade level and pay a higher flood insurance premium as a result of it. But now the guy that was, you know, trying to think 30 years ahead and saying, hey, you know what, I'm going to knock down, I'm going to rebuild, this is my forever home, and I don't want to get priced out on flood insurance, well, now he just got priced out on it as well. And that's honestly the one where I would say, that's what hurts on this one the most. You know, under bigger waters, that was like the initial, like, shell shock that, oh my gosh, rates are going up, right? But at least I still have my land value. Now you have it to where it's rating based on that factor, that if you do a new build, you're still coming in at a high flood premium. And I think those are the ones that honestly hurt more so than the slab-on-grade ones. You know, the other factor is, the slab-on-grade house, you know, they're already used to paying $3,600 for flood insurance. So if that goes to $5,000, like, marginally, that's not like massive, you know, percentage-wise, it's less than a 100% increase. But you have that guy that's at $500 going to $2,500 or $3,000, you know, that starts to really get up there and not justify doing a new construction, because, hey, I still have to pay that higher flood insurance rate anyways.
Or they join the, they join this group over here who currently lives with risk and say, well, it is what it is, if it happens, God forbid, I just walk away.
Right.
Which, again, my resiliency point, which...
They're not insuring first floor anyway, and that's where a lot of it comes to. So that's our marching orders. Thank you, Jake.
Absolutely. Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jake.
Sort of be on the attention of Florida League of Cities. This is our entire state.
Jake, I hope you keep me in your, for the last Wednesday of the month, Big C would really need to hear that.
Sounds good.
Okay. All righty.
Thank you, guys.
Oh, thank you. It was great, thanks. I think.
Thank you, Alex, for letting me sneak that in.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would suggest, because we do have some people here for 6B, the Stormwater Assessment Resolution, that we just take that item out of order, out of courtesy.
All right, move that up to the front, then.
Okay.
Is that okay with everybody?
Yep.
Okay, well, let's hit that one first, then. It's, item 6B, which is Resolution, I guess it's Stormwater, Resolution 2021 to 16. Let's see what page you want here. You doing your reading?
Resolution 2021 to 16, Commission of the City of St. Pete Beach, Florida, establishing the rate of stormwater service assessments, approving stormwater service non-advalorm assessment roles, and providing for conflict severability and an effective date.
Thanks, Amber. There's a lot I'd like to address on this topic regarding the stormwater assessments. So I guess I want to start by mentioning that this process, it sort of follows the same process as the, as the budget. So there's a very formal procedure involved in notifying residents of upcoming changes to an assessment. So we mailed out that notice several weeks ago. If the resolution is approved tonight, in addition to the rates, the other item being considered by this resolution is, sort of give staff the authority to certify the assessment role to the property appraiser's office. And so the assessment is included on the tax bill, the same as the mileage rate. So there is sort of a formal process involved in this whole assessment ordinance behind the scenes, but I do want to address it, you know, in terms of not only the rate, but also just sort of the history of this program. So the stormwater assessment was set up back in 2011, and at the outset, there was a, there was a five-year assessment schedule built into the initial assessment. And so for, I think it was maybe four years in a row, the assessment went up annually. There's two tiers to the assessment. There's a first tier and a second tier that's sort of described in the memo. The first tier is intended to cover the costs of essentially staff time, administrative time to fund the stormwater operation, set the rates, provide the, you know, sort of overall direction of the stormwater operation. The second tier is more specific to individual parcels, and that tier is assessed on what we call an ERU basis, ERU standing for Equivalent Residential Unit. So on that topic, that latter topic of the ERU, the Equivalent Residential Unit, again, way back in 2011, when the city set this up, they brought in a consultant, and that consultant aerially recorded the impervious surface area of 500 sample properties within the city. And it used that data to determine the average impervious surface area for calculating an ERU. So that was, that was sort of assessed as basically the average, and then it was applied to all the other properties in the city, so based on that ERU. So again, you have the two tiers, the fixed tier referring to sort of the admin overhead site, oversight, and the second tier referring to the sort of individual characteristics of the property itself. By the way, then, the city also went out and did this, a similar aerial study for all non-residential properties. So I guess the short story I'm trying to convey is that there was a, there was a very, very detailed method to this process back in 2011, specifically looking at individual level characteristics of parcels to sort of determine their, the impact that those parcels have on the conveyance of stormwater, and therefore, the city's cost to treat stormwater and to maintain our stormwater infrastructure. So that's kind of a very short story as to, this is kind of the background of the stormwater program. Moving forward in longer term, the challenge is that the city is sort of pivoting on the whole stormwater program by not only trying to address rainfall, but also now starting to think about, you know, longer-term major issues, sea level rise, coastal flooding, et cetera. And so I think you're all familiar with the ongoing water threats analysis, you know, with that in mind. So we have this big project that's included in your budget, what we call the Coastal Resiliency Program. And it's a multimillion-dollar project that, at this stage, is just, is really conceptual. Until we know the outcomes of this ongoing study, we don't really know what the, what the final costs are to treat stormwater, address these other ancillary tidal flooding-related issues. But we know there's a really, really big problem that needs to be addressed. It's in the multimillion-dollar range. And so in trying to prepare for whatever that is, we're proposing an additional increase to the assessment, which basically copy and paste that same type of rate increase that was built into the very, very first assessment ordinance. And so it's a 3% increase on Tier 1, a 7% increase on Tier 2. For a typical single-family property, it equates to about $9 on an annual basis. Again, it's included on the tax bill, so it would be a one-time increase of about $9. And again, I know there's been a lot of questions on this, so I just kind of want to reiterate, this is an existing assessment, it is included on the current tax bill, it's not necessarily a, the assessment itself is not new, it's the rate increase that we're proposing that's different for this upcoming fiscal year. And so that's kind of the summary of the rate itself, but there's also this separate issue, and again, it dates back to the whole process that was involved in setting up this assessment, which is the topic of mitigation. So again, when the city set up this assessment, it included a provision for mitigation. So if property owners install stormwater mitigation facilities on-site, they can apply for a mitigation to the city, as long as, you know, it goes through the right process, is approved by an engineer, signed off by the city, we can implement a mitigation credit to the assessment. Now, it's not a total waiver of the fee, it only applies to that second tier. Again, so I referred to the two tiers. The first tier is sort of inherent in nature, it's the cost of doing business. The second tier is where you start to incorporate the characteristics of the parcels. And so the mitigation applies to that second tier only, because, and that's logical, because, you know, we're only talking about the, again, the actual impact that the property has on the conveyance of stormwater. So the mitigation available is a 20% discount of the assessment on Tier 2. And that's, again, that's based on the original policy that was set up. So there was a question about one particular condo building, that as best I can tell, it just seems that, you know, for whatever reason, there was no mitigation application submitted, or at least there's not one on file that I've been able to locate. And so that particular condo building has been paying the stormwater assessment all along. And I, you know, I think, you know, when the, when the notice went out, when the memo went out, it, you know, may have just kind of caught some folks by surprise, like, wow, I didn't even realize we were paying this assessment, not to mention, we've been paying it for the past 10 years. So I think that's sort of how we got to where we are with that one particular property. But I also did just want to, you know, mention for anybody else that might be listening, the city does have this, have this process in place to apply credits to the stormwater assessment. This was the first instance where I had received an actual application, so at least for, you know, four and a half years, I've not received any, so I hope that message is out there. Go ahead, is there a question?
I was going to ask, how many, do you know how many properties have applied for the exemption?
Yeah, I would say, off the top of my head, there's maybe a dozen or so. There's not, there's not too many.
Because any, any... Because any, any, um, any property that was developed after about nineteen eighty, early eighties or by eighty-five, swift mud was part of the application. So I just want to, I'm, I'm not sure back in two thousand and eleven, I mean, none of us were up here, what that process was, how clear it was for those properties to apply. But I think if we could kind of do an outreach, at least now, make it clear, make it easy.
Right, and, and, and not everybody who has a pond will qualify. Because there are some restrictions that are already part of managing your own water. It's only when you build extra capacity. And there's a whole engineering analysis that has to be done.
Oh, okay.
Support, right.
Okay, and I'm not sure how many people actually put extra capacity. That's a different, that's a whole different story.
So mitigation is not just the retention pond, but there's an analysis done, or a private home that maybe has rain barrels? It's, there's a lot more involved?
Yes.
That would need to be reviewed as part of the application?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
I had a question, maybe really dumb. That, we're talking primarily, this is commercial condo projects. Because I do remember the Serrata coming forward, asking for an app, they had an application for mitigation at that time. And that was the first time I had heard that, you know, outside of the requirements through swift mud on new development, that you could actually go in and take on a project that wasn't required at that time. But my question was, I'm thinking, when I see that stormwater assessment, like, I know that we have impervious surface ratios, we have to keep our wa, our, our water on our homes, on our property. You know, they can't have it, you know, neighbors have to keep it on their property. And so it seems like that condo association, they're keeping it on their property, just like we're supposed to keep it on our property. But when I drive out of my driveway, and I'm driving here, for instance, tonight, we have an entire stormwater system throughout the entire city that I thought that my assessment was going towards paying for, as well as.
That's exactly.
It does.
Okay, okay.
I can make that point, it's not just your private property. How do you think we deal with drainage in the whole city? All of the rightaways that we have.
Right. Right, so.
People have to drive to and from their homes, to and from their businesses. And that's a big part of what this was. So as we got a lot of emails, I think there was a misunderstanding of that. It's not just dealing with your property. We have tons of acreage that we have to deal with as a city, in addition to that.
And I'm assuming that's why it's a twenty percent discount, not a hundred percent discount?
That's correct.
Second tier. Correct.
There's still, like, like a fixed variable, it's still.
Right, so that's what I just want to make sure that I understood, because I know that I have to keep my stormwater on my property. And so I'm like, okay, good for them, they're keeping their stormwater on their property. That's how, what we're supposed to do. And I was just trying to process it and understand what the concern was and what we should be doing as a commission to understand and, and process your request as well as, and the fact that we have an application process that this association can go through and to get the mitigation credits up to twenty percent.
Is there a possibility we can get a list of the ones that, you said you only got a dozen or so that have actually gotten them?
Yeah, we can put a list together and.
That, that would be great. I mean, we know, you know, which, you know, how many you got in your district? Maybe, you can.
I just don't know why condos and those should be any different than residential homes if we're all responsible for keeping our stormwater on our property. I don't know, I just found that interesting, because our biggest stormwater issues are, you know, getting us to and from our property.
Yeah.
Well, I think the difference slightly isn't, doesn't matter whether it's condos or commercial properties, they have to go through swift mud. And they have to show through an engineering analysis that they are retaining the water on their properties. Unlike residential properties, single-family homes do not typically retain that water on their property. So I think that's the difference, is that swift mud doesn't, doesn't deal with single-family homes.
Yeah, my.
Civil engineers deal with every commercial property.
I used to have to sign off on it, in our complex, that the water filled up in the retention pond out front went away with, in less than three days.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you had to go in and, you know, cut the grass up and stuff like that. So it had to drain that quick.
Plus you had to go through a maintenance program.
Yeah, exactly. And I, in fact, I used to sign off on that when my PE license was still valid. But we, you know, and that, we must have applied for it, because the homeowners association president called me, you know, where do I get the discount? You know, are they still giving us a discount? So I think we've got it.
Well, yeah, we, we can share some information with you, or, you know, if you want to bring it back and workshop it or something like that. In the meantime, we can put some, we'll put the application on the website, for sure.
Yeah.
That, that'd be good. I think just seeing the listing, I'd be interested in just, just kind of feel for how many have done it, and, and making the application available to people. That would be a, a few good steps.
And, and I, I do know one thing, I know there's all the emails and everybody's interested. You only, I, I, forget the gentleman's name, I spoke with the developer who's sort of speaking on behalf of the, of the board. But I only need one application for the whole condo building. So for that Vista's on the Gulf condo building, you could just have one person submit it, and that would be on behalf of the whole condo building.
Typically, they have a management company. I would think that, you know, board, typically, you know, refers that to the management company that would do it.
Okay. Any other comments? You're good.
No, that's all, that's all I had, unless you have any questions.
Thanks for that explanation.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Hey, can we, well, entertain our audience's comments on this item now? Anybody wants to, or maybe we've answered your questions. I hope. Who wants to come up? Yeah, one at a time. Tell us who you are, where you live, and, you have three minutes.
Kerry Miller, I live at Silver Sands Condos. I'm a little bit confused on the ERUs. Now, how do you calculate that? I mean, we have condos that are stacked up. So we have re, tensions on all three of the buildings. I don't understand the fee, I guess.
Equivalent residential unit, they basically, there was a study years ago that looks at what an average home size is, and it relates that to the area, not, not how tall your building is or how many units are on it. It's the impervious surface ratio within the piece of land.
I understand, it's the impervious ratio. But how does that relate to everybody that lives actually in the condo? We all have the same amount. I mean, the ERUs are the same for everybody, right?
I assume they are, I'm not sure if they are or not. I'm not sure how that, I don't know if that factors on the difference in square footage of your unit. I, I don't really know that answer.
I always thought, I don't know, I always heard rumor, Mel, or, you know, fun fact, I'm not sure. I always heard that the condos kind of made out in their stormwater assessments compared to single-family homes. Like, I thought that it was a much better deal, like, it really got absorbed by more, and it was a less, less assessment.
Yeah, let, let me help you there. If you, if you look at the table that you have in front of you, there's a tier one that is per parcel. Okay, so the entire condo is going to just pay that one time. So as a single-family homeowner, you're paying tier one of sixty-two forty-five, and then tier two over one hundred and eleven. If you're in a condo, the sixty-two is divided by every person in your condominium. So you're really only paying, for the most part, the tier-two number, right? So, yeah, you're paying, in a condo, two-thirds of what everybody else is paying.
Yeah.
I hope that answers your question.
I'm not sure it does, but perhaps I'll be able to talk.
I think that's accurate, because I, I have a house and I have a condo. And my house is more expensive than the condo is for this assessment. So it's generally accurate what was just explained.
That EIU number then does not get multiplied by the number of units in a condo building.
Well, each condo unit is considered a residential unit.
Okay.
So each condo unit pays the one, eleven, and sixty-two.
Okay.
Right.
So the fix, the fixed amount, the admin overhead gets split amongst, if there's sixty, everybody's a dollar, there's usually, if there's a hundred and twenty, you pay fifty cents?
Right.
Parcel.
And then the ERU is per unit, right? The equivalent, Vince, we're, we're, I guess we're speaking on your behalf.
Yeah.
Test us if we learn right.
The, the tier one is the one that's, it's constant across the board. The tier one applies per parcel. So I think it's a little backwards from how we were saying. So tier one is fixed, per parcel, applies to everybody. The second tier is the ERU. So typical condo is zero point five ERUs. So to Alex's point, yeah, you're paying the, you're paying the same rate for the tier one, but you're paying a discounted rate on the tier two.
Sounds good to me.
I never thought that seemed fair, personally, you know, but, but that's how it's always been. And I, that's why I brought it up, like, I wasn't sure if it was accurate or not, because it doesn't seem equitable, but it is how it's always been.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for clarifying.
Anyone else? Come on up. Take care.
Hi, Max Assenauer, I live down the beach, three hundred, fast girl. But, um, we're here to protect each other. We're here, you're here looking out for us, where the citizens should say something if they think that you're on the wrong path, you know, on certain things. I think this assessment should be voted down, period. And the reason being is, I, I think I'm in agreement with some of the people sitting up here tonight. And the reason is, it's not how you calculate it. It's the people that are doing the works on this. Like, for example, we have a major construction job going on right here on Gulf Boulevard, all right? It's done twice. They missed potable water the first time, all right? And, and so they had to redo the whole thing, or redo the potable water. You tell me if I'm wrong. But I mean, there's, um, there was a couple surveys done. You know, you had, um, you had, uh, bidders on it, contractors. You know, how, you know, you have continuous supply lines. How can you have water not being done at the same time? We're gonna, the citizens get double, um, you know, double pavement. They, we have to wait for the traffic, you know, for twice as long. You know, the, these things should be investigated before you shove down another tax on the, on the citizens, because this is, um, there's so many mistakes that were done by the engineers, whether the county, you know, a city. It might, our Public Works was here last week saying that the county mislabeled the map. Well, come on, we, we have a continuous map, we have a continuity plan. You know, everybody knows what was originally there. I mean, we had potable water there. I mean, stuff like that. The people that are in play, implementing this are not accountable to the citizens, because guess what? We're getting hit by assessments from incompetence. You know, I mean, look into what's going on first. I mean, I've dealt with, with Alex, dealing with Public Works stuff for my own property that still hasn't been completed. And I'm talking about the first wave of this, when they ripped up all the, you know, when they ripped up all the pavement and the piping, they still haven't replaced a couple of, um, curbs, you know, that are on my house. And when I went to ask them when they were going to finish the, the restoration of the property around my house, you know, plus another property, they said, um, it's going to be a while, you know, and we're not going to be able to do that, and we'll get back to the, you know, the curbs at a later date. It's been a couple of years on the curbs. Alex worked with me to get the properties done by myself, and I thank him for that, you know, because it looks better now than it has. But I mean, we've had engineers look at these things, we've had surveys done, we've had, you know, architects. And to miss, you know, um, simple things like that, that causes, it causes us to do it twice, that's incomprehensible to, to shove it onto the taxpayer again. You know, oh, yeah, it's a special assessment. You know, it's not fair, though. And you're going to go to the well one too many times.
Your time is up, sir, thank you.
All right, but put it this way, too. If there's that level of incompetence, then it opens the city up for lawsuits also. So don't do it just for.
Thank you. Can anybody else? Okay. Where are we? I lost track. Six B. Since we've taken audience's comments, can we get a motion in a second, please?
Make a motion.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixteen.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Can the clerk do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Pletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Frazoski?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we're back to the, starting with item four, which is a consent agenda. Do I get a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please, city clerk?
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Frazoski?
Yes.
Commissioner Pletcher?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, five A, the interlocal agreement with the sheriff's office.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is the annual renewal of the interlocal agreement with the sheriff's office. The most significant change here is the funding that we discussed during the budget process for adding a new community police officer into the agreement, and then reducing the amount of overtime that we had for deputies on the weekend, because the new officer is going to be working on the, on the weekend shift as well. So other than that, is, is the standard renewal agreement that we have had with the sheriff's office.
I wanted to know a little more about the startup cost, is that per?
Every time that you add a new officer, then there is a lump sum that is required to outfit the officer. So that requires the, the car, the radios, the gun, the, well, taser, everything that the officer is going to need. They take that amount, the total amount, and then they split that over a two-year period for the cost of outfitting the, the new officer.
Is that for any deputy here, or just the?
For any deputy that gets added to the system, so.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, because we've added, well, we did add a second community policing officer several years ago, and.
Yeah, you only pay this one time.
Okay, okay, and that's, and we're spreading it over two years.
Yes, yeah. The, the other thing that the commission had asked about was to have additional overtime hours for the Marine Patrol. And when I had discussions with them, they told me that they are adding two additional boats countywide, and that we should see a significant improvement in the amount of patrolling that they're doing. So what they asked was, let that go into place. And if next year we still feel that we're not getting enough patrolling, then we can augment that with additional overtime. But this is something that they do as part of their countywide sheriff's responsibilities and doesn't get billed directly to the cities. So I think it's a better strategy to let them see how much effort they put into this now, and, and then we can always augment later.
You say they're adding two boats this year?
Yeah.
It's countywide, though.
We're not having to pay anything.
No, we don't pay for that, right, correct, correct. Yes. But you, you, but you pay it, but you pay it up through your, your other taxes.
Right.
Not three hundred.
It's free.
You know, again, as, you know, I think that we've all had those issues with needing better Marine Patrol. And so that's great, that that might be a benefit. It just seems to me that we were paying overtime on the sheriff's contract when we had our own police department. When we had spring break time and things that were going on, big, you know, crime events, accidents, or whatever, we got, you know, the county sheriff's department was in place. Like, we automatically got that, because we were, you know, a tourism area that, are we still getting that portion of our sheriff's presence in our city based on, in excess of what we have staffed?
Doing special events, Labor Day, and those things. They always come and enhance their, their services.
Okay, because I know that, that we always had that before, and I just want to make sure that that's still something that we're getting, because we're paying that through another.
Right.
Taxation form. But anyway, so.
What, what's the hours of the third community policing officer going to be? I know right now we've got Deputy Bishops and Craig are working. They overlap, they each work in four tens.
Right, so the new officer, Craig works Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. The new officer is going to work Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. That way that he'll have the, the overlap with Craig on the weekend. And right now, with one of them is out on vacation or sick, or in, we don't have coverage. with one of them is out on vacation or sick, or in, we don't have coverage. So this will allow for, you know, for that to cover, and we'll have two people on the weekend, uh, which is really, we need, you know, people the most, so...
So the only, the other time you've only got one community policing deputy is Thursday and Friday?
No, no, you, Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Because Craig is, is...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
And Rita is here Thursday.
Okay, yeah, you're right, okay.
Okay, the only thing I wanna make sure, and I know that you're probably all over it, is that we're getting, the contract is set up for the coverage that we need, you know, it's like, you know, we just continue to hear about, you know, um, the dogs on the beach and the, and, um, you know, um, what was it, lately, I don't know, the dogs on the beach is just always a going on, ongoing problem, but, um, I just wanna make sure that, when, I thought when we were hiring the additional, it was for the beach patrol type situation.
I wasn't here when you did that.
Essentially, that's what Deputy Craig is doing, he's doing the beach mostly.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, but the, the, these community police officers are the ones who really, uh, have the pulse of what the community needs and are able to react to what the community, you know, are, are priorities for the community, so, uh, dogs on the beach and stuff like that are clearly a priority, and, and Patrick does a great job going to, all the way to Passagere to look at the dog beach, but then he's not at, um, on Apple Beach, you know, you know, checking on, so, so having two officers that are actually community police officers, uh, I think is gonna do...
Because our, our sheriff's deputies that are not community policing officers aren't doing that.
They, they don't see that as much of a priority.
I think that that's probably one of the, you know, the situations, is that we're kinda used to, everybody, if you're a sheriff's deputy, you're a sheriff's deputy, if you're enforcing the laws, you're enforcing the laws, and if the laws of this town are, we're not going to have high crime, we're going to have dogs running off leash, dogs being on the beach with leash, you know, I mean, that's just who we are. And, uh, so making sure that, you know, you know, nobody, you know, who is in our contract is thinking that, that that's just for the community policing officer, we love our community policing officers, yeah, they do have a pulse, but we want everybody to have that same pulse of what our issues are, and I just don't feel like, you know, we have a lot, I mean, I got a car stolen last night, I guess, on, on West Vena, you know, and, uh, that's kind of a big deal, and I see them patrolling, you know, and I love the night patrols and that kinda thing, you know, and I think the presence in that regard is, is strong, I just don't like the idea that, you know, only our community policing officers can do certain roles, you know?
Not, not that they're the only ones who can, um, but they're the most likely person, people that would actually engage in some of the, what I call quality of life issues, you know, um, you know, some of the, some of the other offices are focused on crime, and whether, you know, you consider walking your dog on the beach a crime or not, you know, but it is important for the community, so we gotta address it, so...
Now, is, uh, the other deputies that we have now, can they go out on the beach? Do they have the capability to do that?
We, we do have a, a piece of equipment that they can take out.
Okay.
Right.
But they don't technically have to go out on the beach in order to enforce the laws of the beach, I mean, they don't have to have special equipment. I mean, you know, dog beach, I can sit out there all day long on my phone, making phone calls and doing emails, and the sheriff's deputies will drive by, and there's like six dogs running off leash right there, you know, it's like they just, it's like, that's, that's not my job, and I come from...
That's okay.
My stepfather and seven of his brothers were all in law enforcement, and they were all sheriff's deputies, so I have the utmost of respect, it's not that, I just think that when you're a small town, everybody wears many hats, and I just don't like, I don't think it's right that we'd only can get that type of level of enforcement on those misdemeanor type issues from community policing only.
Well, as far as the dogs are concerned, dog beach, it's legal.
No, not off leash.
Not off leash.
Oh, off leash.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, they're running around off leash.
That's a county.
I see it when I go down there, too.
It doesn't take a, a separate, you know, vehicle, or, you know, to get you to issue tickets there, or even on the beach, I mean, you know, you kinda have to step in the sand, but, you know, duff out your shoes afters, but I just don't think you need, you can see that there's a dog out on that beach very easily, and sometimes there's up to, you know, six or seven on the beach.
Do, do we get to interview the proposed community sheriff?
Yes, and I was gonna have Rita and Patrick be part of that interview process.
Well, Rita and Patrick are doing a great job, we love you being in our world, you know, I just...
We want, we want a child of them, we're gonna get two of them and produce one.
Right, but I have a feeling they could handle anything that our city throws out, and, and again, knowing who we are and what our, our crime, you know, issues are, um, I don't think that, you know, writing tickets to, to, uh, that is, is too much of a stretch for our sheriff's deputies that are driving around.
Yeah, I received...
That makes sense.
I received feedback also on, uh, called quality of life type enforcement, and, and City Manager and I have discussed this, and, and particularly when it came to discussing speed limits and what we should do and some of the programs, most of the feedback was, please just enforce what we have, get the sheriffs out with a speed trap or whatever, so word will get out, people will slow down, um, and, and the dogs, and, and quality of life type things that add to enhance just living here, or for living here and visiting here.
I think the three I think of when you say that is speeding, alcohol on the beach, and dogs on the beach, those, you know, anyway, okay.
Very seldom will we have all three of those in one situation.
That's, that's true.
Okay, okay. Yeah, we all, okay, that's enough of that discussion, now, do we have any comments from the audience for this? Seeing none, can we get a motion in a second then, please?
I am moved to authorize the City Manager to execute the interlocal agreement with the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office for Law and Enforcement Services from October 1, 2021 through September 30, 2022, in the amount of $2,741,480, let me reread it, $2,741,485, excuse me.
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second? Can we have a roll call vote, please, City Clerk?
Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Frazowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Pletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next is, uh, item 5B, binding cost estimate for forty-fifth, uh, 55th to 45th Electrical Undergrounding Phase Two, Duke Energy Project, City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, the, um, uh, the effort towards undergrounding the, um, power and utilities on the Boulevard is, um, now on its way for the area that we call Phase One, which is between 55th and 75th. We already have a binding cost estimate with Duke, we have a construction company that is going to be doing the work, and the, uh, the Public Works is already, the department is already meeting with the two entities and everything else, and trying to coordinate a start date for that construction. Effort, we're finalizing eastments along the corridor, uh, which is really one of the last steps before we actually begin work, doing that work. The next phase, uh, which we ended up splitting into two subphases, is the area between 55th and the Bayway. So what we're doing right now is, uh, we are entering to an agreement through here with Duke for the binding cost estimates for all of the electrical equipment and the connection of the electrical equipment between 55th and 45th. Uh, one of the important reasons why we're doing this is that there is money available from the penny three tax, uh, that needs to be spent before September 30th, uh, and that is, um, I believe, three million, yeah, three million oh sixty-four.
Right.
If we don't spend it, we lose it, and, and I think we had talked about before as to the reasons why the project for a long time didn't, didn't move, uh, but we are now basically, uh, got seventeen days to, you know, to finalize this expenditure. The, um, the reason why we didn't include the portion between 45th and 35th is that Duke didn't have those numbers available yet, uh, and we needed to make this agreement and this payment prior to September 30th. So I'm gonna be coming back to you at some point in the fall and doing an agreement for that last section with, with, with Duke. We also have to do agreements with Spectrum and Frontier along that corridor. Uh, and depending on the, on the performance of the contractor on Phase One, we may or may not use the same contractor to actually do the implementation of Phase Two. The, uh, the penny four monies are gonna be coming in over the next five years, and once we fin, we have enough money right now to finish Phase One, uh, even after this payment, and the money that's supposed to be coming this year and next year. If we're going to accelerate Phase Two to be immediately after the, uh, the completion of Phase One, which I think is the best approach, then at some point we'll, might need to get a letter of credit, uh, in anticipation of the, uh, of the money that we're gonna be receiving over the next three years, uh, I think that that way we can just keep the work going stopbound, and for the residents, uh, we can almost make it look seamless that it was just one project, you know, because by the time that we do all the work on Phase One, I think we should be ready then to begin on Phase Two and just continue working through that.
Now, once we, um, sign a contract, the money's encumbered then, so...
We, we, you know, we'll sign the contract, the Duke requires that we pay right away.
Oh, okay.
We'll pay immediately and then send the request for reimbursement.
Okay.
Sounds good to me. Yeah, we, when we do that, I mean, if we're gonna be moving north to south, 75th eventually to 35th.
Right.
Then that, uh, I assume as they go along, we said underground, are they gonna energize stuff and pull down the wires above, so there was a guy...
They will do it in phases, so the, the first phase, 55th to 75th, will be energized together, right?
Oh, okay, okay.
That's so fun.
We should have little events, little celebrations as we do it, right?
I know.
Pull the switch.
Yeah, there you go, there you go, see if the lights work, you know? Okay.
Just give a ribbon, cut and you cut the wire.
Yeah, don't do that.
Not energize them.
Okay, okay, that's enough. All right, any comments from the audience on this item? Seeing none, can I get a motion in a second, please?
I'll make a motion, I move to authorize the City Manager to enter into a binding cost estimate with Duke Energy in the amount of $3,610,642.46 for the electrical undergrounding work along Gulf Boulevard between 55th Avenue and 45th Avenue. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, can we have a roll call vote, please, City Clerk?
Vice Mayor Frazowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Pletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next one is, uh, item 6A, Resolution 2021-15, Special Magistrate.
A res...
Under you.
Be a date.
Okay.
Go ahead.
He's gonna take it.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of St. Pete Beach, Florida, authorizing the City Manager to execute the two retainers with the selected individuals for special magistrates for code enforcement services and providing for an effective date.
So moved.
Right, thank you. Uh, thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, uh, we did have a, um, I didn't sign that yet, um, request for proposals for special magistrate position, um, it was widely advertised through Florida Bar, other places, we got six very good law firms that submitted proposals, um, the committee, uh, which is listed on your agenda report, there was five of us, Alex, myself, Matthew, Kathleen, and Michelle, uh, we reviewed all of them, um, based on the criteria that was submitted and, that was published in the proposal, and selected three of those, uh, they're retaining the firms, but they've assigned a individual who will be a special magistrate, we interviewed three of them, um, again, they were all outstanding, um, we selected, uh, instead of selecting one, we, um, we found two of them to be excellent for the city, um, we placed a high priority on, um, knowledge and experience with local government, especially, um, land development codes, zoning codes, things of that nature, um, and so what we wanna propose to you all, if you would, and the code does allow you to hire, retain more than one special magistrate, is to allow us to, um, go ahead and have two of the firms, which will appoint two attorneys, and allow myself and the administration, Alex, to look at how do we, um, perhaps, um, organize some of the different, um, types of violations that we're dealing with. So, for example, a lot of the agendas are very stacked with, um, with short-term rentals, vacation rentals, which is a kind of a specialized type of prosecution, a city attorney have to prosecute the code enforcement, and, you know, part of that is, there's two parts of it, if you advertise a short-term rental, that's a violation, if you do, if you get caught doing short-term rental, that's a violation, but there's a certain way that you need to go about prosecuting that. So one of the things that we were talking about is not only having a deeper bench in general, um, to have two special magistrates in the event that one's not available, um, for some reason or another, 'cause both of them have, uh, agreements with other cities to do other types of things, are very qualified, um, but then again, also be able to use both, um, perhaps to, um, use certain agendas for specific types of things, so just in abundance of caution, and to give us that kinda creative approach with code enforcement to allow us to go ahead and retain both of these, uh, individuals, these very good lawyers with law firms, uh, that, you know, their, their proposals are in your packet, and I think all five of us on the committee were extremely impressed with all of them, and especially these two.
Yeah, is there a specific expertise difference that you were looking for there when you selected these, or is just...
Well, like I said, um, we really, really wanted, um, expertise in land development codes, zoning codes, um, but also just local government codes in general, and also expertise with local government in general, because knowledge of, you know, how government runs and how, um, you know, what are the nuances of it as opposed to being more involved in, like, private sector, real estate, or something like that, um, I'm, I'm not saying that, um, though, you know, an attorney is knowledgeable in a lot of different things, but I think just due process and being able to run these types of, um, there are really many trials, being able to run and run these, uh, types of things, have the backup staff to be able to, um, work with the clerk in my office, 'cause there's, once the hearings happen, there's orders, there's all kinds of things that happen afterwards between my office, the clerk's office, and code enforcement, and, you know, liens have to be filed, so we looked at that as well, you know, to make sure that they had support staff to be able to work timely and efficiently with, um, with the city, so that was really, really it, and we found these two individuals, all, all of them were excellent, really frankly, and I was super happy that we got the kind of response that we did, um, and, yeah, I think these two individuals are gonna give the city a deep bench, and also the ability for us to perhaps think creatively about how to organize the, the agendas, uh, or the dockets for different types of violations.
Now, when you say we retain the firms, do we have to pay a monthly retaining fee, right?
No, it's strictly getting, both, I'm sorry, should I mention that, both of them are hourly, just like myself, they're $200 an hour, no travel time, no mi, you know, miles or anything like that, they're, um, one in, one of them, uh, is, Traskwell Firm is, has a lot of local knowledge, uh, um, especially on the coastal barrier areas, there's another attorney, uh, who is, um, very knowledgeable of local government, out of Bradenton, but he's also, um, former judge from out of the state, so he really gave a good presence on how to run a meeting, how to, you know, deal with the respondent and the city, things like that, so it's strictly, um, hourly, they'll submit their invoices every month, uh, they'll be run through me and then submitted to, uh, finance for pay, for payment, that's it, so it's not, you know...
So how much time do we give them to prepare for a case prior to them sitting up here? Is it, they only get paid $200 while they're sitting?
No, 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 that, yeah, whatever work they put into it, and frankly, you want them to get the materials ahead of time, and, and these are all very similar to what you all get, you get your, your, your agenda, uh, a week ahead of time, you know, the magistrate will get the docket with the backup materials, all the stuff that's available to the public and also to the respondent, um, and will have reviewed that, and will also, as a quasi-judge, will review the law and be prepared for that hearing, and come in and hopefully, boom, 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 you know, do the right thing, so...
No, I just didn't know, I think that you guys interviewed, and I have a lot of confidence in y'all's ability to select it, I just wondered, you know, um, you know, at some point, you know, how prepared are they to be able to already understand a lot of those issues before having to dig, dig deep?
That was, yeah, mm-hmm, that, that's a very big, um, that was a very big part of the evaluation, again, knowledge base, um, they both are from very well-known firms that, um, if one of them need to reach, uh, I mean, in my own law firm, every law firm, you know, you have other attorneys that you could speak to and talk to, they, not only do they have their own individual experience, but they come from firms that are well-versed in local government, um, activities, so, uh, it's not like they're gonna have to relearn anything, they're, they come to the table already very experienced, very qualified.
All right, any other, no comments? Any comments from the audience? Okay, can we get a motion in a second then, please?
I move to approve Resolution 20-15.
appointing special magistrates for code enforcement services and to authorize the city manager to execute the two special magistrate service agreements.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Can we do a roll call vote, please, City Clerk?
Vice Mayor Frazlowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Pletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Grous?
Yes.
Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Item 6, we've done B already, so 6C, Resolution 2021-18.
Yeah, this is a resource sharing into local agreement with the city of Treasure Island in which we're going to be receiving the services of their GIS, Geographic Information Systems Analysts, to help us with public works and planning areas where we need to create additional layers for managing the city's resources and assets. And they are going to be receiving, sharing services through, from Michelle, that is going to help them figure out a path on how to basically bring all of the improvements that we had done over the last year and we're still finalizing. They are wanting to basically get to the 21st century as well. And she is not going to be running the parking department. She's simply going to say, first you need to do A, then you need to do B, and this is how you get from A to B. And I'm giving them just that general direction, you know, to support that. So the agreement also provides that if we find other opportunities where we can share a resource that might not be needed on a regular basis, but that we can maybe do 20 hours here, 20 there, or 30 and 10, it does create that ability to add resources to this. At the next meeting in September, I'm gonna be bringing an agreement similar to this, but for equipment. In where we are, have agreed to buy a machine that does striping on the road. The machine is about $20,000, and we have agreed to buy it half and half. So we're gonna be buying that. They have a broil that is a spare broil that they have, and they're gonna throw that into the mix. It's equipment that we use to pick up the garbage on the beach.
The beach, the articulated thing?
Yeah. I saw your face like, what's a broil?
Broil is a furniture.
But having a spare one is great for us. They also have a barge that they use, and we're gonna be able to use the barge. So we're trying to figure out a way to just be smarter about resources, both people and equipment in a collaborative manner. And I think it's a win-win for both to be able to do this.
I love it. It's being a good neighbor, you know? And I think that's great to develop those relationships.
Especially if they allow us to use that barge on 4th of July.
Well, between that and, we're gonna be buying a barge that we're gonna be, instead of fixing the dock on Eagan, we're gonna do a barge there that is gonna act as a dock. Throwing, we don't need it, and then we're able to launch it when we need it. Later on, we'll put the two of them together, and we have enough to do fireworks, and so.
That's a good idea.
We're trying to be different, so.
What is a GIS analysis slash administrator? What do they do?
If you think of the maps that we generate in the city, a GIS analyst basically takes information and codes that information into what's called layers. So if you wanna have, for example, the map that we have of all the city parks, it's a map that somebody colored in like 1970 with green markers. Well, a GIS analyst will go and say, okay, this is a park, this is a park. Marco Sarski knows, when he first came in, he's like, show me all the parks in my neighborhood. And I think Jennifer pulled up that little crayon marker map and, okay. Every single asset that we have should be layered, so we can basically have the ability to find all of the equipment that we have. These are all the, every time that we were doing a different lift station, the question always, you know, it's like, you know, especially Ward, he's like, what is that one? Right? Well, if you know, we put all that information into different layers, we can make that information available to everybody in staff and also put it around for the community to know what is that we have, equipment, what are we on, what are we don't own, how many trash cans do we have, you know, how many benches that we have and what are the locations of those benches? All of the, everything that we own should be documented as to where it resides. And that's part of what this person will help create.
Digitizing the whole thing is what it amounts to.
Correct. And Treasure Island hired this person about a year and a half ago. They already been doing a lot of that, so now they're just doing maintenance. Because once you get to like steady state, you can then, so the kind of work that he's gonna be doing here is similar to the work that he already did for Treasure Island. It's just a different geographical area and, you know.
And I noticed in that case, we're splitting that person 50/50.
Correct, yes.
Where with Michelle, we got her too busy here to give her.
You give her, no, I wouldn't get rid of 50% of her, no.
Okay. Any other comments from the commission? Anybody in the audience? Okay, can we get a motion in a second, please?
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-18.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Can we do a roll call vote, please, City Clerk?
Commissioner Pletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Grous?
Yes.
Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Frazlowski?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have no discussion items on the agenda, so I think we proceed to, to City Clerk, City Manager. I'm sorry.
She's part of my report.
Oh, okay. I didn't know what she was doing up there. Congratulations, she stayed through this whole thing.
I know.
Yes. She is my report.
Well, wait a minute now.
But I think what was keeping, Amber, do you have?
Amber, did you, City Clerk report?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay.
I'm glad you're feeling much better.
Thank you.
Okay.
And with that, Tara?
Good evening. My name is Tara Salmeri. I'm with Plant Active Studio. Some of you may know me. I was one of the people that crafted and created the Passageway overlay. So tonight, I'm gonna give you an update on the analysis that was done as a result of this board putting together a moratorium to take a look at Passageway overlay. So the good news is, for the city is, is you retain the same consultant that actually crafted it. So the bad news is for me is that I have to actually evaluate and do a really good analysis of what maybe could have been better or different, or, you know, it's really great to take a look at it. That Passageway overlay was adopted four and a half years ago. It was actually on Valentine's Day in 2017. So in June, I was, I met with the city staff as well as Commissioner Pletcher, and then we did a site tour and review, as well as some site plans of eight developments in the Passageway. So the intent and desire between looking at that on a built environment, as well as the code, is to analyze four things. Site plan review, and how is the review being done? Design criteria, that was in the overlay, waterfront, rear yard setback, and height. And out of those four criteria, I came up with an assessment and have determined a few things that maybe could be improved. It's always great to take a look at your code, especially after development has occurred. So once we've done that, I know there's been some discussions on the rear yard setback, and there were questions on why certain things were happening. And the intent years ago for that was to have an incentive. The overlay is an option. So that's really what it was, is to provide an incentive as an option. We didn't look at the waterfront as something different. And now through the years with development happening, we determined that it's probably better to have the rear yard setback not be part of the incentive on the bay. So that's one of the recommendations, as well as, no one has used some of the standards, so we also took an opportunity to look at those. And the accessory structure, which is not a pool, but it's an actual structure itself, was allotted a rear yard setback that was a little bit closer to the water. And we also recommended having that setback be consistent with the primary building and not have that as an incentive any longer.
Well, and I think there was a huge disconnect. And I think the disconnect was one topography, and that was waterfront. All of the things that they initiated into all the discussions and all the meetings and all the reviews from the historic board, the planning board, and the commission, the big disconnect was the fact that that rear 20-foot would be encumbered by structure, by accessory structure or anything. And how that happened is beyond me, and I'm mortified that I was part of it. And so I'm glad we got it fixed. And I think that I still don't believe that the goals and the direction of the overlay and the design guidelines, I don't think they were, you know, I was curious what your take was on, was it effective at all? Because I don't see it as being effective at all. It may be some dimension in the front.
Yeah.
But the goals were the front, reduced front yard setback, you know, to create that stoop. So it would be like close, you know, walkability and connectivity to the sidewalk. It wasn't upstairs.
Correct.
I mean, there were so many things that were not, and maybe it was the interpretation of the zoning, but, you know, I guess once you have that rear yard setback, that in that topography of the waterfront not understood and clear in there, it doesn't breed a lot of confidence, I would like, actually, for you just, you know, to take your findings and go back to the historic board personally. Because otherwise, I don't know why we're having it, because I'm not seeing any positive that came out of it. It was supposed to be incentives, and all it did was just make everything bigger. And may have gotten some dimension on the front, but not in the way that it was discussed and, you know, intended. That's my take on it. You know, obviously, I'm not, you know, thrilled. I've talked to Tara, you know, it was raining that day. We didn't get the best, you know, onsite visits. And I was hoping that, you know, when you saw what everybody was doing, you know, I was thinking it was gonna be more, it was gonna have more of an impact as far as controlling the mass and scale.
Yeah.
And it didn't. I don't think it did that.
Yeah, I think, so, did you ask for me to provide my opinion on that, or are you just the?
No, I was, no, I thought that's what you were gonna be here talking about, because I didn't get anything written. But I was just hoping, I knew that we were taking the moratorium off by just removing the 20-foot, any incentives on the rear property.
Yeah.
But I didn't know where it was going.
Yeah, so the intent, the review is, there's a couple of different things to the layers. It was an optional overlay, and technically, the majority of the homes that are being redeveloped are not opting for the overlay.
Right.
So that's some of the question of, we're not getting what we wanted. The short answer is, you're not getting what you wanted because it's incentive, it's not required. So most of, the majority of the parcels that are redeveloping are not using the overlay. Most of the parcels that you see that even have mass and scale aren't being required to really even do that. They're adding that because they're not opting for the incentives. So when I did that analysis, I think that there's, I think the desire was to encourage people to use the overlay, but if you're having an option, people have the right to not do that, and they're using their underlying zoning. And some of them, and those, the one particular one that you referred to is having buildings close to the street, the waterfront properties were allowed to set back so that they could utilize their waterfront views. So that was one that came across during the analysis years ago, is that was the intent that is to not require the waterfront to have to do that. So that was a clear recommendation from the board that wanted it at that time. So, and the two parcels in question, they've actually exceeded the rear yard setbacks in both the underlining and the incentive. So some of the development that you're seeing really has little to do with the code as much as it has to do with the options of a property owner. So there's several things that you can do. You know, years ago, when we did this, we talked about just making it a flat requirement to have standards and to have that development be better. And at the time, the board was not comfortable in making those recommendations. So the one thing that you could do is require mass, scale, and differences. But now with, and I'll defer to your city attorney, but most communities are not doing that right now because of the design standards. So you're almost in a position that if there aren't a lot of incentives, the only thing that you can do is hope that people are gonna engage and participate in that. So I think that's one of the biggest challenges, is how do you incentivize someone to use that?
Well, when we were doing this, I think that, and this is too much for this late in the evening for, you know, my patients either and yours. I don't wanna be difficult. I just think that the goals and the direction were not realized, whether or not we gave them that additional, we gave them incentives. I mean, I wanted to do more performance-based variances where we give you this, you give us this, we give you that, you give us this, you know, I mean, all that kind of stuff. And we codified that. But unfortunately, we left off a topography that was absolutely disastrous, you know, which is that rear yard setback, protecting that back 20 feet. And that's just a huge fatal flaw that I don't, I said on every single one of those meetings, and I know that that was never the intention to jeopardize that rear 20. And so it wasn't any board decision that did that. And so basically, I don't know where we go from here on it, other than obviously, we need to remove the moratorium. And I'm glad we're fixing the rear 20. I don't know as far as what else we could fix that would kind of come close to, you know, giving the incentives without giving away, you know, because everybody's still building so far above base flood. So they really shouldn't have gotten any of those incentives.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think anybody is getting incentive. I mean, nobody's using the incentives to date. And so one of the recommendations is to reinstall that rear yard setback. A couple of other recommendations that I made was that, you know, years ago when we did, we did mass and scale, and we had the proportions. And currently today, you don't have a staff that has an architectural background. So the staff is relying on architects to say that they're meeting it. The staff's taking a proactive approach to bringing it to the historic board to review that. But there is another layer that you can do, is that you can have, just like you have consultants looking at things, you can have architects on board that can evaluate what's coming through and then really pushing back on whether or not that's really considered a primary or a secondary. Because if there's an argument, staff, you don't have architects to be able to argue that back. So that could also be help, you know, for you to have that. I think the.
And we agree with that recommendation, by the way, and we're going to.
I like that recommendation. I just, again, I'm just trying to figure out where, you know, what would the architect review? Like, is it what we have? Nobody's building a base flood. Nobody's giving us rough angles.
Yeah.
We're not getting the stoops to, you know, we're not getting any of that, even though we allowed for a bigger effort floor ratio and reduced setbacks to get it, and we're still not getting it.
Yeah, and I think, so that comes back to, for me, the question is, is how do you have people develop under your optional overlay? And that's really the big question, is it's not that you're not, yes, you are not getting it because builders are not opting to use it. So I think that the next step would be to ask why builders are not using that. Because is there other additional incentives that could encourage that? Because to date, you're not really seeing that. You're seeing it in some of the interior. And we looked at those, and those look, you know, they do actually have that mass and scale that you were looking for. They are addressing the street. But that's the tough thing when you have an optional overlay, is how do you get people? Because the incentives are in there, the standards are in there, they're not being used. So that's kind of the question, is how do you, how do you, and there's lots of ways you can do that. You can have roundtable discussions. You can bring in the developers in the community and ask why.
And I think we've done all that. And Tara, it's not your fault. I don't blame you at all. I'm just saying that there were so many topographies that you were working with when it came to Passageway. I mean, so many different, so many uses, densities, and everything else. I mean, there was just, it was so much information. I mean, there was just, it was so much information that I don't think we had the capacity at the staff level to site test properly to know where we were going. We were really kind of hoping that we'd be able to take this citywide. You know, this was going to be something that we would be able to incorporate, you know, these form-based codes in citywide. And again, I'm not saying it's you. It's just frustrating, because it was a lot of time, effort, energy, and money that went into this to not end up with what we were hoping for, you know? So that's life. It happens. But I know that you did a lot of really, really great work. And I think you, we didn't have the support system to be able to think of every single thing. And unfortunately, you know, thank God, we had the nine-foot setback on the pools, because otherwise, everybody would have taken advantage of that reduced rear setback on the waterfronts. And we would have had a lot of really, you know, very, very upset people. So the good news is that we didn't change that at that time, and so it all worked out to a certain extent. But I don't know. I just don't know where we're going with it.
Yeah, and one of the typical advantages that you give people when you're trying to create incentives is height. But we're already dealing with base floor elevation plus 30, so houses are already 40 feet high. So you really don't want to grant additional height, because you're just going to have, you know, 45, 50-foot homes? I mean, that's, you know.
Right.
So we're really very limited in what.
Well, we were trying to encourage base flood plus one, you know, to keep the scale down, when now, you know, with sea level rise and climate change, that's probably not a very thoughtful thing to be encouraging, even though it's in our historic district. So, you know, maybe we, you know, I don't know how we maintain character and charm and mass and scale and, you know, under these circumstances, and maybe it's all for naught. And we just need to go with it that way. But I'm not prepared without anything written, you know, too much, but I did like the architectural feature. But I, again, I'm just thinking, you know, it really worked well for some properties, and I'm not sure which ones. Except for, you know, because we haven't had a lot of redevelopment.
Yeah, when we looked at eight, and, you know, I think that maybe even back then, we had discussed, you can go to a pattern book and that kind of level. But, you know, that was another discussion that we all had that nobody was really comfortable with. And when you're weighing incentives, the only thing that you can provide is allowing a development to get bigger. And the only way it can get bigger is either by side, rear, or front, or height. So the sides really didn't, and I think the benefit of Passageway was, is it looked at lot size and then matched lot size with lot development. So that continues. The waterfront becomes a challenge, because it's a 20-foot setback already. And then it was a five-foot incentive that definitely needs to be removed. And you're right, we didn't spend a whole lot of time, because the city didn't regulate waterfront properties differently back then either. So I think that was just, you know, an oversight and flaw of us not really taking a look at something that the city didn't do.
Right.
Yeah.
Where are we on that setback thing? We put a moratorium on.
Yeah, and we've got to lift it.
We need to change it, though. But don't we have to?
Yeah, so all of this mayor has to come back. He's got to go to Planning Board, Historic Board, and then he'll come back in a written form for you guys to approve an ordinance.
But we probably need to do that sooner than later, just because there is people that are planning on buying, that they've knocked down homes and no.
And I believe next week, there's an ordinance that's moving forward that has that recommendation of the 20-foot, as well as defining the accessory structures, and having those accessory structures, like pool homes, having to be consistent with a primary, which will be 20 feet as well. So those definition of waterfront has now been included. So that will go for the Planning Board on Monday, and then you'll be seeing that October 12th.
The moratorium expires October 24th?
I'm not sure.
Well, I was just, I was asking Alex the same thing, because we had 180 days. So if, for some reason, I mean, we'll be back here in two weeks. So if for some reason the timing isn't off, we can extend it, you know, a little longer in order to get the ordinance to you for second reading.
But I will say that, I mean, it's not all negative and any. I mean, what this project was, had so much to do with our fourplexes, our triplexes, our 40-by-50 lots, our 50-by-100 lots, but they were all basically, whether they were landlocked or they had alley access. I mean, there were so many different topographies that we were working with in this situation. This is just like one of those, like, holy cow, how did this ever happen? You know, we don't, you know, and then, you know, because nobody's using it, you know, like, you know, what the heck? You know, and I don't think they can pick and choose what they use. Yeah, I think it's either all or nothing, right?
The interesting thing is, is that you kind of can pick and choose. Because, and in some respects, it's been helpful, because some of the development has operated as if they had to have design to their home versus the underlying zoning doesn't require it. So I think that's been, I mean, it's been somewhat of a perk, but that's really, so it has kind of been a little bit of a pick and choose. And the other thing is, part of that site plan review assessment, the city doesn't have a real strong review requirement of what applicants provide from, you have to meet the code, but it can be from a site plan review very challenging to review developments, because it's not consistent. So one of the other recommendations, and staff's already been working on it, and I've helped review that, is to have a clear application of knowing what. So if you come in, you'll actually know, are you going through this overlay? What are the standards? So it's going to be, you know, because some could just put their standards anywhere they want. So that's being updated as well, so that it's more consistent.
Well, and porches and balconies and, you know, all the little nuances of what that translates when it comes to the redevelopment.
I would highly recommend having an architect start reviewing some of those with you, because I work in other communities that have architects. As Vice Mayor probably knows, I think you were an architect at one time, weren't you? So. I do remember, so.
This is now my full-time job.
It can be very helpful, and, yeah, the Vice Mayor knows as well. It's very helpful to have another architect communicating that primary mass and scale, knowing what rhythm and balance is. It can be argued back and forth with architects versus somebody who's not an architect saying, well, we have a signed and sealed architect saying it's meeting it. You, as a city, have every right to say, no, it's not meeting that, but I think you do need that expertise. It's a challenge if you don't have that. And you can assess your applicants' that review cost as well. So it doesn't cost the city anything to just have that surety. You know, that will look at those elements.
Your candied attitude and your temperament and knowledge and experience has really, really helped tremendously. And I, you know, I'm just, you know, kind of annoyed with, you know, the, you know, what, where we're at right now. And it has nothing to do, again, with you. It's just, it's a little frustrating.
Yeah, I mean, it's very frustrating when it's an incentive-based code. I mean, I can completely understand why that's frustrating. Having something as an incentive unless you're giving another story of height, which I know how much you love to do that. You know, there's really, I mean, aside from people wanting to just develop well, which you have had that. You've had.
We have.
You've had some really great developments as well.
Sounds good. Well, thanks, Tara, for the update. Let's keep going.
Thank you.
Any other questions or any comments?
Her vice, like, oh, she spoke enough for all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, City Manager? Okay, City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor. According to Florida law, I need to, when I need to talk to you in private about a settlement, I need to request that publicly at a public meeting. Currently, we're engaged in a lawsuit with 2707 Passageway Way LLC regarding a revocation of a dock permit. The plaintiffs in that case and us, we've been discussing a possible settlement. They provided us with something in writing, and I'd like to bring that to you all in two weeks at an executive session, so that we can talk about that. It's the, you know, it's a tentative proposal. It's in, it's in form enough that I believe that, while it may not be in final form, I think it's sufficient enough for us to bring it to you all and discuss it and get direction from you regarding that. So it would be next, the date?
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, Monday, 4:30, if you're all available.
Twenty-seventh at 4:30.
Great. Is it going to take that long?
Well, Amber?
I just thought from experience that it doesn't end right at six. And we have a budget hearing, and that's the final adoption, and there are strict rules, and it's advertised. And I wanted to respect Vince in his presentation to you all in the adoption. So I asked.
That's exactly what she told me.
We could back it up a little bit and give ourselves a little bit of a buffer to use the restroom, have a snack.
Now I know. She's really running the show around.
So.
All right, 4:30?
Cut this through.
I'm just following orders.
Thank you, Amber.
Okay.
You had me at dinner.
Dinner? Oh, okay.
So.
All right.
4:30 would be great.
Okay, Monday the 27th at 4:30. I can do that, sure.
Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Nothing?
Nothing? I think we ran through your.
You did. I'm sorry.
Vice Mayor.
It's a sensitive subject.
Mark?
Just very quickly, one item. I discussed this with the City Manager. There's some properties, there's several properties in my district, but I think it's across the city, who are receiving code violations for lights related to turtles and turtle protection on the beach. Some of them, so I believe I should send them to, they have some questions, to Michelle with some questions. They're not clear in what the issue is, and certainly the resolution. I mean, most of them, I see, and I've looked up at some of the bigger condo units that have had their lights in place for umpteen years, as well as some of the hotels. So we just need to look at it and see, figure out a proactive approach without having to relamp an entire, you know, 15-story building. That's all hit?
Okay.
Good.
Okay, good. Only had one or two things at FEMA. FEMA maps, the Big C members that I have gotten with, all have adopted either, adopted the FEMA maps and not the county, because the county hadn't finished yet. But they all looked at it from the standpoint that they may want to switch over. They can always change it, so. That's sort of where they were on that. And I think other than that, we are doing, next month, this month, the meeting is going to be about microtransit. And we've got the microtransit ordinance, people put that together at St. Pete presenting. So, and I want to get Jake in there someplace pretty soon, because we all need that, so.
That is way more important than anything else, to be honest with you. Microtransit's important. I think we've got a probably pretty effective, you know, thing as well, but.
Let me talk with Jake, because I want to, I'll touch base with him about coming to that and also find out what kind of, we're going to have two speakers. I suspect that if we stop talking insurance, it's going to be a lot longer presentation, because there's going to be an awful lot of questions.
Is PSTA doing the microtransit talk?
No, 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 no. It's.
Let me clarify, because you guys are thinking different things. This is not freebie. This is micro-micro. This is scooters, pets, all that kind of stuff.
Electric bicycles.
What kind of regulations you put in, electric bikes, you know, what kind of regulations you put on those things, and how do you manage where they can ride or not? That's what that's about.
Yeah.
We're trying to make it consistent all the Barrier Islands, if we can.
Well, I think that typically, you know, I guess a lot of the Big C doesn't have city managers, doesn't have planners, doesn't have, you know, building officials and that kind of thing to create that kind of consortium, you know, situation. So they're benefiting from, you know, us having a little bit more developed.
Yeah, in fact, I think somebody today, when I was with about a half dozen of them, somebody asked the Mayor of Bel Air Beach, how many residents he had, and he said 1,600. Somebody sent up that that's all. Yeah, other than Treasure Island being about 60% of us, everybody else is 2,500 or less, so. They're small communities, and they share a lot of stuff, like we are starting to do with Treasure Island now, which I think makes a lot of sense. But anyway, okay, unless there's anything else anybody wants to talk about, I say we adjourn.
Hey.
Thank you.